Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You're all set.
Okay. Well, thank you for attending this evening. We just returned from the executive session and we're going right into the open session. Next thing on the agenda is appointments. So, we're going to appoint Paul Reynolds, Town Treasurer Collector. We're going to review, discuss, and act. And then, we're going to take something out of order. Because Mr. Reynolds is here and there's no reason really for him to spend the all night. Under new business, we're going to take the letter G in place of, I mean, second to review, discuss, and act on the Treasurer Collector.
Motion to take our new business G, Conservation Ethics Disclosures, out of order in place after Paul Reynolds Treasurer Collector appointment.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Reynolds, hi.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
You as well. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Would you like me to start with the first item, the Senior and Disabled Voluntary Tax Contribution Form?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. So, under Mass. General Law, we are able to, with the approval of the Selectmen, to distribute non-political municipal information along with the tax bills. And at a previous town meeting, the town adopted a resolution to include our donation form for the voluntary Senior and Disabled Voluntary Tax Contribution Assistance Fund. So, we have formed a committee recently to administer that fund comprised of myself, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, and three at-large members from the community. And the committee has been going very well. We have been sampling guidelines from other communities in terms of timeline, award amounts, deliberation process, factors for consideration. And while a lot of it is still a work in progress, we have decided that we wish to have the application period for those who are seeking aid to apply during the exemption window for assessing, which occurs up until April 1st. And so, what we would like to do is the assessors can accept exemption applications up until April 1st. It doesn't necessarily have to begin January 1st. But what we settled on, just to kind of, to have some consistency, what we would like to do is to review applications for assistance between, from January 1st until April 1st. And while we plan over time to build out a town webpage and develop some more information that we would like to share with the public on how they can access those resources, in the meantime, what we would like to do tonight is request permission from the board to simply edit the form that we distribute with the tax bills, the voluntary contribution assistance form. We would just like to do a marginal edit on there to put, please see the assessing office for applications between January 1st and April 1st. That way, really, if we were able to get the approval this evening, that would allow us to go live in time for the preliminary bills. I regret to inform the residents of Dayton that I was able to successfully generate the preliminary billing files today, so the tax bills are ready to go out on time. I haven't sent them to the printer yet because I wanted to wait for this evening because if we, if the board concurs and is able to entertain a motion to allow us to edit the insert, just to put the application window date of January 1st to April 1st on there, I'll be able to amend that application and get it sent over to the printer to go out before the deadline of the end of the month.
Okay. So, you're the most hated person this week?
Yes.
Okay. I have no concerns. I think it's a great idea. We've talked about this many times, and if, it's just a matter of amendment to the notice, I have no issues with that. Nicole?
No. I have no issues.
Excellent. Over time in the future, as we build a website and things, I think the most important mailing to get it in will be the actual billing, which goes out at the end of December, because that will be landing in people's mailbox right during that application period.
Yep.
So, at that time, we may approach for a future amendment, just to include something like the town webpage or things like that, as we really start to develop this idea. We might put a link to the town's webpage or something like that. But just in, for the sake of generating some buzz, making people aware that this exists, making people aware that they can access these resources, we're hoping that the earlier we can reach people, that this is going to encourage more contribution. So, we figure that if we can raise awareness, we might induce more people to donate. So, that's why we want it to be as proactive as possible and just get at least the application window and a mention about it on the header.
Sure. Okay. So, is there a motion on the floor to accept this modification to the notice?
Motion to accept a modification to the Senior and Disabled Voluntary Tax Contribution Form.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Great. That's one thing down.
Yes.
Now, the Building Committee. Obviously, we've talked about this before, and you're going to be appointed to the Building Committee.
Yes, absolutely. I'd be very happy to. I have read through some of the guidelines regarding the MSBA and what they're looking for, and I look forward to having the opportunity to continue to familiarize myself with the requirements and meaningfully contribute to the committee. And I'm very excited about the project. I've got one child in elementary school currently, and I've got two going into kindergarten next year. And I'm looking to, I'm really looking forward to a productive committee.
Okay, great. Any questions?
I'm glad you're excited about it. I'm excited to see you on it as well.
Thank you.
Is there too much on your plate? I know you're on a lot of boards and committees.
No, this one is personal.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, do you have any?
Nope.
Okay, great. So, there are motion on the floor to appoint Paul to the Elementary School Building Committee?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paul Reynolds to the Elementary School Building Committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, we're going to jump to G, Conservation Ethics Disclosures.
Yes. So, I had the audacity of being in a butter to a parcel that is coming before the Conservation Commission. And so, normally, so, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, all, which is the Conflict of Interest law, all abutters to any parcel are considered to have, what I was informed by the Ethics Commission Attorney of the Day, is considered an intrinsic financial interest in what takes place in abutting parcels. Just as an easy example, if somebody wished to buy a parcel of land next to your house and put a toxic waste dump there, it would be reasonable to have concerns about your property value, right? So, that's kind of the, that's kind of the logic that plays into the belief that anything, if you were in a butter, you were considered to have a financial conflict of interest. So, normally, it would be a very simple solution where I would just recuse myself and I would not participate in the vote in any way. However, in this instance, it occurred that three out of the five commissioners happened to also be abutters. So, at our last meeting, we were unable to open the hearing for this project. And this is a fairly routine utility, you know, utility line maintenance project. And given the fact that it's a utility line, which utility lines have a tendency to stretch all throughout town, so being in a butter is not unusual to this, since it's a fairly wide-reaching project. So, normally, I would just recuse myself. However, in this instance, we wouldn't have a quorum if everybody who is in a butter were to recuse themselves. So, we are seeking the ability to be granted a waiver in order to participate. So, the form that I filled out is a Section 19 disclosure, the Disclosure by Non-Elected Municipal Employee of Financial Interest and Determination by Appointing Authority Form. I filled this form in particular out at the recommendation of the Ethics Commission Attorney of the Day, because I called for guidance. And just as a free plug for the Ethics Commission, for any officials who are watching, they're a very, very helpful and easy-to-work-with agency. So, if you ever have any questions, you can call and troubleshoot situations or get your questions answered. They have an Attorney of the Day program. A lawyer can call you back in the exact same business day. And I've used them multiple times. I've found them to be very, very helpful to deal with. So, if anybody ever has a question, it never hurts to ask. You know, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. And so, we have filled this out for this evening. And what we were able to do, we were not able to open the public hearing for the, for this, which was unfortunate for the applicant, because they are paying their representative to be there. What we were able to do at our hearing in order to, in order to try to find a practical workaround was, since we were not able to open the public hearing at our previous meeting, instead, we took public input out of order and then allowed the engineer to speak during the public input portion. But they'll have to restate everything for the record once the public hearing is officially opened. But just at least for the sake of allowing them to convey some of the information that they paid to have conveyed, that was the kind of our temporary stopgap. And so, we have filled this form out. I don't know if you had any questions about the form, or if there was any, anything that I could explain, or any questions that you might have?
No, I don't have any concerns. I'm glad that you came forward and, Nicole?
So, all these, four of these individuals are butters to the same parcel? Is that correct?
No.
Okay. I was like, what's the chances?
All right, Lisa, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were on the...
All right, thank you.
I have a different issue with BHB, so I disclose that...
Okay.
Yeah. I worked for BHB in 2013 temporarily for a few months, and I just wanted to be cautious and disclose it. But I don't have any prospective work ahead of me with them, don't plan to work with them in the future, and know that I can, you know, make an unbiased decision of, you know, can fulfill my duties in reviewing it, so.
All right, thank you.
And from my understanding, not every conflicted person may necessarily be in a butter to the same parcel, because this actually, this project is for transmission lines and asset conditioning refurbishment. And the transmission line runs from the Dayton-Berkeley town line over to the Dayton-Swansea town line. And so, the way that it bisects the town, it kind of hits an awful lot of households on the...
Yeah, that's what I just noticed, yep.
Is Jack Crawford? Oh, hi, Jack. I'm sorry. Paul, let me just go down that one time.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Actually, John H., everybody calls me Jack.
Okay.
My sister has a parcel that's not even a direct abutter, but that parcel is in my late father's, John F., Crawford's Realty Trust, which is hers.
Okay.
So, Crawford and Crawford, but Stonegate is a direct abutter, and she's on the opposite side of that. But, excuse me, it's, what is it, 300 feet? I believe if there's a project, we're going to be notified.
Right.
That's all that is. I mean, the parcel itself has nothing to do with me.
Okay.
Because I'm a commissioner and...
Sure. Great. Thank you for doing that.
You know, it's going by, so...
Yep.
That's why I filled the form out, and that's why you have it.
Great idea. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir. No questions for Mr. Crawford? Jason LeChance?
Paul, he's not here. Today, Mr. Chairman, he is actually my direct next door neighbor.
Okay.
Thanks.
This is a review, discuss, and act. Do, we want to hold off on Jason LeChance?
I don't, I don't feel like we have to.
Yeah, I know, because I told you you didn't have to be there until 15:30 or something, right, Karen?
I don't think we need to hold off.
Okay.
I mean, we have all the documentation.
Sure. All right. So, is there a motion on the floor to accept the Conservation Ethics Disclosures?
Motion to accept the Conservation Ethics Disclosures for Lisa Caledonia, Jack Crawford, Jason LeChance, and Paul Reynolds into place on file.
Also, like, if I could just recommend, like, a family amendment, just so the board has the opportunity to actually, or to approve what has been presented, and just to include in the motion, and the board has determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the service, of the services which the municipality, which the municipality may expect from the employee. I think that covers, that would cover everything for each of those four individuals.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to include the language the town administrator recommended.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Paul. I think your obligations here this evening are done.
Thank you, Paul.
You're all set.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Jack. You can go if you want to, if you want to stay.
I haven't been to a speech in years in a while.
Okay.
That's why you're smiling so much, right? Because you haven't been here in a while?
Nothing exciting happens, but that's okay. The next review, discuss, and act is to appoint Abel Mariano as Conservation Commission Associate Member. Abel, how are you, sir?
I'm very good.
Quick question. What's the job of an associate?
Well, I'm not really sure. I think from the explanation that I was given, it's initially a fill-in member, or a member that could be called upon to do special tasks, so, you know, to add to the pool of quick expertise.
Okay. And why do you want to do it?
Can you say that at the podium?
Oh, do you mind just speaking into the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because of the microphone for cable.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm reaching retirement age, and I think it's about time I give something back.
Okay, cool. You're not retirement age. Is there a motion on the floor to appoint, I'm sorry, are there any questions?
I have one question, because your business, it looks like your business is wetland restoration.
We, yes, we've done quite a bit of it.
Would that have any kind of conflict with this kind of commission?
I haven't done any work on wetlands in Dayton at all.
Okay.
Ever.
Okay. That was my only question.
Mark, do you have any concerns?
No.
I want to preface this by saying, we had another member apply a few weeks ago, and we actually tabled the discussion appointment, because one of the goals at that time with the town administrator was to organize the committees that we have in determining who was on which committee, the openings that were on each committee, as well as how many members were going to be on each committee. So, if, now that the, there's been, being a change in personnel, I no longer feel that that goal is going to be achieved. So, we have to continue as if that goal wasn't there. So, is there a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Mariano as Conservation Commission Associate Member?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Abel Mariano as Conservation Commission Associate Member.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hull, how are you?
Good evening.
Do you have some clarification on the associate member?
Actually, yes. The associate member position is currently covered under bylaw, as it is currently written. It can be up to five associate members. Ms. Caledonia is here. Mr. Crawford is here. They can correct me if I am wrong. There are...
I'm not in the primary.
I'm sorry?
I'm not even in the ballot.
Okay. There are, under the bylaw, the ability to have up to five associate members. Currently, under the existing bylaw, the associate members do not have a vote, nor can they sit in for a regular member. There has been some discussion about changing that bylaw. With that bylaw, there is a process, as you're aware, and that bylaw requires, one, to be voted by the Board of Selectmen to place on the warrant, and two, as a bylaw, to be voted by the residents at a town meeting, whether that be a special meeting or a town, the annual meeting. Currently, that has, that effort has been in early discussion, but has not been implemented. The primary role, and I'll speak about that shortly, of the associate member is multipurpose, to help with some tasks, but also to learn. Ever since my days in Boy Scouts, I've had a deep appreciation for conservation. That appreciation led to work on several habitat restoration projects, and a stormwater runoff project at Camp Norris, and a very large project that I worked on as an adult in cooperation with the Taunton Park and Recreation, the Sons of Italy, and Old Colony, I'm sorry, yes, Old Colony Corrections. I'm sorry, Carver, Carver Forestry Camp. And that was restoration of stormwater runoff, as well as rehabbing an amphitheater. With the rise of development of Dayton, the need for vigilance and conservation planning is more important than ever. As a member of the Open Space Committee, our goal is to develop a land trust in coordination with conservation, trails, CPC, parks and recreation, and the planning board. And we've had early discussions about that. And I might add that that movement was first proposed by Planning Board Chairman, Mr. Cavalo. To preserve the land for passive recreation, as well as to help maintain Dayton's rural character. I see my involvement with conservation as a way to coordinate and streamline communication and to help complete that goal of a land trust. I see the role of the associate member of conservation as being multipurpose. Three of the present members of the Conservation Commission got their start as associate members. One was a teacher, one a salesman, and one in finance. All had a love for conservation, as I do, and all wanted to learn all they could as they worked to preserve Dayton's habitat. Because of the intricacies of the Clean Water Act and the rules and regulations of the DEP and stormwater, that learning process is very important before an associate becomes a full member. I might also add, the process to become a full member of conservation requires a hearing process before the Conservation Commission and final approval and interviews by the Board of Selectmen. There is also a need for conservation to better inform the public about rules. You know, we talk about things such as vernal pools, or one that's come up recently, wildlife migration corridor. Or we've had several residents that have no idea what a no-touch zone is. And one of the roles that I would like to see us do as a community is work at better informing the public. And one of the ways that we can do it is similar to what we did with DDIC, with the help of a conservation commissioner, Mr. Reynolds, and his video programs that he puts on YouTube, informing the public about DDIC. But we could do the same for conservation, or also the same for stormwater. As a former selectman, I am also aware that there is a need to improve communication between conservation, the building department, town administrators, the Board of Selectmen, and developers. I've already made those connections in my role as a selectman, and I'd like to help conservation to enhance that. Mrs. Caledonia works, I believe, 25 hours a week. She is straight out, as are the commissioners. So any way we can be of any help and assistance to them, I'm sure they would appreciate that help. It's important to make the permitting process more clearer and more streamlined. In closing, I am aware that the Conservation Commission's five members and agent are overwhelmed with the amount of work and decisions that they have to make with the recent rise of development in town. I feel that I could be of help to that commission in lessening the load. The current bylaw allows for up to five associates, and I am asking for your support to become one of those associates. There is currently one associate, actually now two associates on that board. Thank you.
Mr. Hull, are you spreading yourself too thin? With all the committees and boards?
The Conservation Commission meets once a month. My role as an associate is not one where I am committed by statute to any specific projects. I can manage my time. I think I've showed it as a selectman. I am certainly going to be a lot less busy than I was as a selectman. And I can pick and choose what projects that I will be working on.
Okay. Thank you. Nicole, do you have any questions or concerns? Mark, do you?
I just have a general comment. The board did receive correspondence from the Conservation Commission on Mr. Hull's interest in the appointment, and in the letter from the Conservation Commission that said there was no limit to associate members. And then I hear tonight that there's five? There's a limit of five or six?
Well, that's my understanding. I might be incorrect. That's why I asked, but it was my understanding.
Just whether there is or not, just, it's tough. We need accurate information, whether it's from the board, the Conservation Commission, or there is, I'm hearing two different things, that's all.
Okay.
Right. And I'm told by Mr. Didget, it's actually a way at the moment that we actually have no limit, from what he understands. But I also wanted to correct Mr. Hull in that now we only have one associate, which is Mr. Mariano. We don't have any other associates.
Okay.
I believe this board did, they?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Hull?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Leonard Hull as Conservation Commission Associate Member.
Is there a second? As Chair Well stepped down and seconded the motion with an asterisk. We can vote, and, but I don't know if during selectmen's reports, if there'll be any additional conversation about Mr. Hull. So is there a motion on the floor? It's been seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hull.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay. Town for announcements.
The Town of Dayton Food Bank will be held on June 15, 2024, located at Town Hall 979 Somerset Avenue. This is in the lower level. Please be advised that increases in the transfer station sticker fee and rate take effect on July 1, 2024. New fiscal year 2025 stickers are available for a cost of $30, which will be in effect from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025. Residents who have purchased a calendar year 2024 sticker will be assessed an additional 15 for an updated fiscal year 2025 sticker for the use of the transfer station after July 1, 2024. A mailing will be going out to current sticker holders, and additional town outreach is planned. Due to significant cost increase being occurred by the town, the transfer station will no longer accept trail loads of truckloads of miscellaneous and debris as of and after July 1, 2024. There will be a blood drive sponsored by the Dayton Health Department and Police Department on July 13, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Town Hall 1111 Somerset Ave. And boarding committee vacancies. The following boards and committees are looking for volunteers to fill their open vacancies. The Cable Committee has two, Cemetery Commission has three, Commission on Disability has two openings, and Open Space has one.
Thank you.
Good job.
We're going to move right on to public input. Is there anybody here who wants to have public input? Karen, can you do me a favor? We have a three-minute limit. Can you, we have to adhere to that because of.
Time?
So can you time for us, if you don't mind? Mr. Hull? You've got three minutes.
Okay. Last evening, just an update on the Dayton-Hobart Regional School Committee meeting. Special shout-out to Melissa Babbie and the Dayton PTO for their $12,000 gift to Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle School, as presented last evening to the Dayton-Hobart Regional School Committee.
A gift for what?
To be used for extra programs, special programs.
Wow.
Not instructional, day-to-day classroom learning, but the extra programs, the after-school programming that they do.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Leo Brim, who was appointed last evening as the school district's business manager. The Board of Selectmen will be working closely with him during the budget process. Mr. Brim stated that he was looking forward to working with Dayton's accountant, Serena Amaro. And just, it was mentioned earlier, Donna Burdos, Elizabeth Kucher, and myself were appointed as school department representatives to the Dayton Elementary School Building Committee. The first meeting of the Dayton Building Committee will be Monday, June 24, at 4:30 p.m. at Old Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard at this time? We do have another public input coming up, if you, Bill?
Bill Moore, 1835 Smith Street. I see that we have on our agenda that there's going to be a special town meeting in a very short order. I would like a very clear explanation of why, and what the articles are for, specifically the second one, and who's responsible for this, and who's paying for it.
Okay.
You don't have to answer now.
It's going to come up, so we can.
It's on the agenda.
Address it when it's on the agenda, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else, please? Yes?
Good evening. This is Dave Rosa from Lincoln Avenue. I hope you can remember all the things I want to say in three minutes or less. At the last town meeting, our esteemed town moderator quoted Lyndon Baines Johnson. I would, I would just request that he find a different president to quote. I'll make that note. Also, just on conservation and Conservation Commission for a moment. I have seen where it was, good conservation was not practiced well from Alaska, Ohio, and other places, including my own property over in the town of Free Town. So it can become convoluted, and it can become difficult for butters and property owners. So my, and I want to include in that a note with regard to Mr. Hull, who I've known for a little while, and I have to say that we have had significant differences of opinion, but I do respect his corporate memory. And I'm not sure that was, is often weighed properly. So I wish him well going forward, whatever it may be, and look forward to cooperating with him in the future. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tom Delucci, 2086 Palmer Street. I just wanted to caution you that with all this talk of conservation and the various other committees that have been brought up, like Open Space, and, you know, some of these other ones, there is an element in this town that wants to bring in the camel's nose under the tent. And what they're looking to do is bring in something called cluster housing. I know you're all familiar with what that is. This would certainly bring in an entire mendicant class, as somebody mentioned, it's welfare tourists coming in from third-world countries. It could bring that in. It's going to ultimately change the character of this town forever. So I would caution you against falling for too much of this agenda. A lot of it is being brought in through the mechanism of SERPD, the Regional Development Authority, who send to us, you know, college kids who have no idea how to build wealth or anything about economic development, but they have these pie-in-the-sky theories. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, I got a flyer in the mail. Were you guys going to address that flyer at some point?
Yes.
Outstanding. Because I was concerned, and I have it on good authority, that your names were not attached to it. And I haven't spoken to you individually. Right. Your names were attached.
I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't know if I could.
You didn't give your approval for that. And that fits both elements of the crime of mail fraud, because it was a fraud, even though you may or may not have agreed with the content of that flyer, and it was sent through the mail. So the amount of houses in the Town of Dayton, how many households do we have?
400-something? I mean, 4,000-something?
4,000. So that's 4,000 council mail fraud, if it went to all of those houses. So somebody has a lot to answer for. It's probably the last person who had their fingers on it. So in any event, I just wanted to bring that up, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. We're going to move on to Town Administrator's report, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just remind the board and the public about the upcoming special meeting that the board is having. It's a joint meeting with the Dayton Water District Commissioner, is this coming Monday night at 6 o'clock here at Old Town Hall. We've been actually, like as you know, as the board approved, together with the Water District back in February, the scope, to look at areas of efficiencies where we might be able to better, where we might be able to better, to better coordinate and plan with the Water District. And at that time, we engaged through a state grant we received last year, we engaged with Wooden and Curran, and the financial firm, Raftellus, to actually, to work with us to look and identify those opportunities. So Monday night, both Wooden and Curran and Raftellus will be here. They'll present what, kind of like their finding and recommendations. I think they're really centered on the planning, coordination, the planning, coordination, and the, again, the really like financial and indirect charge-back components. What I have heard just very, just very peripherally so far, you know, like the kind of opportunities that I would maybe expect to come out of this project. So that, as I mentioned, that meeting, we'll take place 6:00 here, 6:00 p.m. here on Monday night. We do, just because it's a grant-funded initiative, we do face a June 30 deadline to really work with the Water District to consider the recommendations, to make any changes or edits, and then to hopefully be able to finalize, to finalize and approve a final report, so we have the ability to close out the granting grid set as well. But, you know, like, I mean, based on what I've heard, I don't think, from what I've heard, I don't think there's going to be any lightning rod issues. I think really, as I mentioned, it's going to be a lot focused on planning, coordination, and also planning and coordination with regards to water capacity as well. As we know, and the Water District just actually extended the moratorium that had been in place for the last three and a half to four years. They voted last week to extend it again. And so I do believe the analysis will look at, how do we strengthen the planning and coordination, and also try to address, like in a very cost-efficient way, you know, the water capacity issues we face as well, which as we know now, like are also further limited by issues like PFAS and other things, too. So I think if I had to predict in a crystal ball, that would kind of be where we're going. But like, it is like a really important for sustainability, for, you know, for the new, for the growth and the plant growth that we need to have as a town to survive. Yeah, like, we'll focus on all those things as well, and I just want to just like remind everybody about that. And like, and finally, I just want to, like, again, I just want to again thank the board. I'm going to thank all the residents of, thank all the residents of the town for a great, you know, a great service over three years. Like in my time here, serving as the town administrator, I'm extremely proud of the work, the accomplishments, and the impact that we've had for Dayton and its residents. And I thank everyone here for that opportunity, including the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. The feelings mutual amongst, among the board of the job that you've done, and we appreciate everything. And you've done a tremendous job holding the town together and managing the growth that we have. But thank you. With that said, selectmen's reports are next. Nicole, do you have anything that you'd like to talk about this evening? Mark?
Just, we've had a lot of events in town lately.
Yep.
And the selectmen, we all got to participate in the cow trip a couple of weeks ago. Took 58 minutes for three cows to use a bat, you know, go have a cow pie, and that was an honor to, you know, judge with you guys. Good job to the Dayton Lions and to all the winners. And my family got to visit the strawberry festival, and we did buy a tub of strawberries. We didn't have strawberry shortcake, and we saw, from a distance, our selectman, Nicole Mello, there with her table.
Sold 400, I believe, strawberry shortcakes. They ran out.
That's awesome.
So that was fabulous.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not fabulous to run out, but I mean, it was great.
That's a good problem to have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So a lot of events in the community, and it was nice to see. And we had our town meeting on Monday, roughly a $28 million budget with, I'm told, only 120 residents were there to vote. A very significant budget, so we hope to see better turnout in the future for our annual town meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a report other than more of a comment. Thank you, Mark, for those comments. The flyer that went out in the mail was regarding the passage, passing of the town administrator's position. And it is concerning me, and I can't, I'm not speaking for the other board members, that the selectmen were signed, were, our signatures were implied that we were endorsing that flyer. And I want to make sure that everybody is aware, those here in this room, those on Zoom, and those watching on television, that I no way endorsed that flyer. We were not consulted. We, actually, again, I don't mean to speak for the other two members, so I was not personally consulted to ask if I could, my name could be used with that flyer. I don't know what, if anything will come of it. We've heard everything from nothing to millford, which, again, I don't know what the outcome will be. But if anybody else wants to add their concerns, that's fine. It's just that, in the future, I would certainly like to be consulted before my name is attached to something, as well as, we were lucky because we all agreed on this particular flyer. So as much as we were not consulted to put. So as much as we were not consulted to put our names on there, we just happened to agree with what the flyer had, I happened to agree with what the flyer had said. But in the future, we don't want our names, I don't want my name being attached to something that I might not agree with, just because of a simple statement that was made.
I concur with your statement, everything that you said. It was more a matter of respect thing, you know, to put a name on something. I will just say that I do happen to know the individual who did send out the flyer, and I did get an apology today for it. So that was enough for me. And, but I do agree with what, everything that you just stated.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to old business. This is an update on the interim Town Administrator, Town Administrator's search. Tonight, we are going to, tonight, we, an executive session, we had an executive session discussing the Town Administrator's search, not search, the contract of the Town Administrator. And I want to bring you up to date on the search for the replacement of Michael. When, when we, well, when the search actually happens, which I believe starts Monday.
Yes, Alec, we're working on and now providing, like, feedback, like, in updating proposed profiles that I believe will be proposed back to the board at its next meeting. Alec, and then, Alec, and then based on the profile, the feedback on the profile as well, then the position can be posted. And, but yeah, like, we're getting all the background information updates over to the firm at this point.
We have hired Paradigm as a search company for us. They actually brought us Michael. So we're hoping lightning can strike twice, and we get another good administrator. The, the process, we don't know for sure how long it's going to take. We've heard estimates, sometime September or October. We will do our due diligence to make sure that we have the right person as best as we can. It, the process is, the search firm that we hired will conduct a search through different associations, as well as just the MMA? Or is it something else, too, that they apply their search to?
The MMA, but also, but they also reach out individually.
Individually?
They also reach out individually to professionals in the field.
Okay.
Who they know might be looking. They also cast a broad net as well, like, in reaching out to professionals in the field who might be comfortable where they are, but might have an assistant, might have a colleague, might have a friend who might be looking. So they do, they do use a multitude of channels. And Effitz and I have seen, oh, yeah, even in other examples in search, they do a really, you know, like, well, covering of, you know, of the basis to that end.
Paradigm was, was, is well-respected in the industry, search industry. And we feel very comfortable as a board, choosing that company to represent the town of Dayton. The, like I said, the process can extend to months. We've heard everything from September to October, possibly even into November. We don't know. Again, we, we want the right candidate for this position. And does anybody else want to add anything to the search that we're doing?
So Paradigm is basically the selection committee, and they will, they will name three finalists.
Yep.
I know there's always, they will name three finalists. And there's something else to that end that I wanted to make, but no, that's it.
Okay, Nicole, do you want to add anything to?
No, I was just very happy when they mentioned that we could have some community engagement. I thought that was important.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
And I look forward to that.
The company that we interviewed for the position mentioned that there was going to be some community engagement in the process. Everything from town hall style to even here at the Old Town Hall, possibly having the three finalists available for people to come up and ask questions of. We're going to move on to review, discuss, and act proposed contract with the interim Town Administrator.
Yes, yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like, without further ado, and on behalf of the board, I want to introduce Mr. Jim Purcell, who was appointed by the board Monday night as our interim Town Administrator. Yeah, I've worked with Jim, worked with Jim in the past. He, he is a man of extreme class, integrity, he gets tons of knowledge. He's extremely well-respected, and he, I think, he's already hitting, hitting the ground running and nursing himself into what he needs to do, like, in the transition. And we do have a proposal, we do have a proposal, a contract here from Mr. Purcell, with whom the board met with in executive session. The contract does fit, Alec, within the currently budgeted, appropriated funding of FY twenty-five. And this would be a contract with Mr. Purcell that, that would actually begin this coming Monday and go through the end of October at this point.
Okay, great. Any other things that we need to be addressing before we put it out to a motion?
No, not that I, no, Mr. Purcell, is there anything else you wanted to add or subtract, or otherwise? Well, if there's any questions at the board?
So one question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. So is there a motion on the floor to accept the contract with the interim, interim Town Administrator?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract for James Patrick Purcell and to add the dates that'll become effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And prepared to, sorry, we want a closing date on October first or until someone takes office as well?
Yeah, I think it's about October thirty.
October thirty-first, or, so I'd like to, I'll restate my motion. Make a motion to appoint James Patrick Purcell as interim Town Administrator with a start date of June seventeenth and an end date of October thirty-first, or if, until the position is filled.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you. This is another review, discuss, and act. Board of Selectmen designate to the school committee building, the school building committee. And we also are going to vote on the committee as a whole, correct?
Yes, like, with all the members now.
Yep.
In place.
So I'd like to make a motion, can I make a motion to appoint Mark as our Board of Selectmen designate to the school building committee?
I'm going to step down as chair and second that. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And now, motion on the floor to appoint the whole committee as a whole, as listed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Update on Main Street roadway and sidewalk cost estimates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have Holly Roach here from Granite City Partners a few weeks ago. I think the board and the public will, will remember that we had Granite City
Yep.
here together with Wooden and Curran to provide a proposal to do, to work with us, to come up with the ARPA, the ARPA cost estimate, the whole project cost estimate for Main Street. And then to really help us actually put the materials list together. So we had the ability to obligate our ARPA funding ASAP at that point. The Bristol County ARPA obligation date was June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we knew we had to act quick, and we did. And since then, just as an aside, which we'll get into, actually, later in the agenda, since then, Bristol County did extend out the obligation requirement to September. But, you know, like, at this point, at this point, we have, we do have a plan to obligate all of our funding. We're in really good shape here. Alec, and the rest of that obligation really comes with regards to the stormwater drainage, like, and improvements for the Main Street project that will help us, help us get to there. And then the following phases of the project, so, Holly.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, board, good evening. My name is Holly Roach Robinson of Granite City Partners. We, as Town Administrator Mike Mullin just mentioned, we were retained by the town to provide cost estimates for the Main Street drainage and roadway improvement projects. So for those who may not be familiar with the project, it is about three thousand feet of drainage improvements along Main Street from Williams Street down to Elm Street, and then also paving and the creation of sidewalk from Williams to Elm Street, and then paving and the resurfacing of sidewalk from Elm down to One Thirty-Eight. We provided three cost estimates. The first cost estimate being if the town were to purchase the materials and perform the drainage work in-house, so a cost estimate for just the materials only. That cost estimate came in at four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. The second cost estimate we provided was if the town were to put the project out to bid. So that would not only be the cost for the materials, but also things like contractor markup, labor, mobilization costs, things along those lines. And that cost estimate came in at just over one and a half million dollars. So there is about a one point one million dollar difference between if the town were to do the drainage work in-house versus putting it out to bid. It's quite a significant amount of savings there. And the last cost estimate we provided was the roadway resurfacing and sidewalk creation, or the resurfacing of the sidewalks. And that cost estimate came in around three million dollars, just over three million. So in summary, if the town were to do the drainage work in-house and put the roadway resurfacing and sidewalk creation out to bid, the total project cost would be around three point five million dollars. If the town were to put everything out to bid, the drainage and the roadway and sidewalk work, the cost estimate would be around four point six million dollars. We wanted to present this information to you tonight, not only for budgetary purposes, but also for your consideration on how the budget might align with the timeline of the project. So we would foresee the timeline of the project if the town either decided to do the work in-house or to put it out to bid, that that drainage work could start pretty immediately and work through the summer and into the fall. And it would be completed in the fall. And then the roadway work could be put out to bid in the fall to get competitive pricing for a start in the spring of twenty twenty-five. It's good to let trenches settle through a freeze thaw cycle so that the dirt compacts and you really minimize any of the rough road that I'm sure we've all driven across as roads have been patched up. We did work with the Town Administrator's Office to put in an ARPA application for a little over three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So I'm hopeful that we'll be approved for that. And that's kind of an update on where we're at for a total project cost.
How do you get so high?
How does the?
How did the costs, what was talked about, a two million dollar figure at one time, get to be three point six if we go out of house?
Well, I do think the, the two point five million dollar costs are.
Yeah, yeah, the two point five million was, was, was in twenty twenty-three, like, our original, our original, like, cost projection. But again, we wanted to, and that's, like, it's one of the reasons why we wanted to, one of the reasons we wanted to make sure we were engaging with engineers and project managers on this. So what we were, what we were projecting and needed to plan as a town were real numbers. And so we have that backup now. That is, Alec, is much more, Alec, is much more ironclad than the numbers we were working with al- last year. We have begun to build up in terms of, you know, building up our savings to be able to fund that, leveraging together the funding that's already been approved as of the other night, a total of six hundred and, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to, to Monday night's town meeting and the two town meetings before that. We've also leveraged together available Chapter Ninety funding as well. And then we've always been planning to also obligate and commit part of our ARPA allotment funding as well. But we really would never have an ability to truly know the true cost of this project until we did what we just did. And that's frankly why, Alec, I knew we needed to do that. So we can really have a plan to deal with this project, because it's a big project. So we do, like, with, utilizing the existing available funding now through what has already been approved to Chapter Ninety, I'm going to, again, with our available ARPA funding, like, it is very clear to me that we don't have the ability to bid the whole project out. We're gonna, we have the need and we have the ability to meet that need with our amazing highway department to do the drainage improvements in-house. That, as, as Ms. Roach mentioned, that allows us to realize, that allows us to realize savings or unencumbered costs to the tune of, to the tune of one point one million dollars. So with, we do have available in our mini allotment, ARPA allotment, approximately three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we're able to obligate of the four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, Alec, in stormwater upgrades in terms of drainage, we do have the ability of that four hundred and thirty-six thousand to obligate three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of that. So like, we're, yeah, like, this is what, because we've been so very tight on capital funding, unfortunately, this is what we've been having to do for the last three years. It's the same type of thing that we've are doing and are doing successfully with the library project. We're trying to leverage together a whole bunch of funding sources to make everything work because we just haven't had the capacity to, to meet the needs all at once with, with one full lump sum of funds. Alec, and at the same time, we're trying to come up with our first ever capital plan all at the same time.
Even with the amazing highway department doing the drainage improvements, the cost seems almost unattainable. Has there any more talk about bonding?
I, yeah, like, we, like, in my opinion, like, this, and again, like, in my opinion, and obviously I'm on the way out the door. But, oh, yeah, like, I really believe this project is a phase project anyways. And the first thing we have to do irregardless of, Alec, is deal with the stormwater upgrades. We have the ability and funding to do that now. I think, right, like, after, are we moving in that direction? Because we also have the ability through ARPA to do that through the summer. Alec, I really think we need to, to sit down with the highway department, highway department, Granite City Partners, you know, like, I mean, and together, and together with the board to look at how we, how we make this project work. You know, like, I think based on where we, the, Alec, I mean, like, and frankly, it's why we pulled together this water district analysis as well. In hindsight, we would have had improved and better coordination with the Water District, oh, you know, five years ago, that actually brought us to this point. Alec, and those are, unfortunately, these are the lessons that Alec, we're learning to try to engage in these, oh, you know, really postmortems to improve in the future. So we're in the middle of that now. But, but like, I do think just in terms of bonding, because we, Alec, we have to, I mean, like, the expectations of Main Street residents, you know, I mean, it's been a while that they really haven't had any type of viable role, really, to drive on. And we know, and we know the Main Street corridor is one of the main thoroughfares in town to begin with, even, you know, not for Main Street residents, but, you know, for folks, you know, from the Cedar Williams part of town, you know, like, Milk Street and those neighborhoods as well, they all, oh, yeah, like, everyone relies on that. So to, to, to answer your question, Alec, I think over the summer, Alec, we really look at the project, the phasing of the project, how, how the construction elements of the project align with available, with the available funding that we have now. Alec, 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 in the funding that we need. And I think bonding. And I think bonding would be good. We don't have the ability, in my view, to drag this project out for five years. Like, I just don't think that would be good for me there. Alec, I think bonding, even though our operational budget capacity is extremely limited and tight as well, Alec, borrowing to, to really address this project once and for all is, Alec, Alec is a very good option at this point.
Jim, do you have all that? Okay. Nicole, do you have any questions?
No.
Mark, do you?
I wasn't on the board at the time, so I just, I just need some help to wrap my head around this.
Sure.
The water district put in water mains. Is that what started all of this? And now we're rebuilding Main Street?
In a nutshell, yes. There has to be drainage, sidewalks, and Tom is here.
He can probably, like, I mean, I do think there were existing infrastructure issues.
Well, prior to the water going...
Yes, that we knew when the water line, when the water line was going to be replaced, which took the water district some time to get prepared to deal with that as well. Based on the failing infrastructure in the road to begin with, we knew once the water district went, it would be our turn next. And synchronizing that now, I think, is, oh, yeah, like, is really where we're meeting the road.
Tom, do you want to come up? You're shaking your head no at one, or you want to just... Do you, um, do you agree with the numbers as far as if your department was able, were able to complete the drainage?
Yes, those are very safe numbers.
Okay.
Yes, just for example, what happened like in the last year, just the searchers' materialists we used for the castrum. A lot of the materials went up $4 to $5 a ton. When you add that to thousands of tons, there's a lot of money there.
Okay.
Back to Mr. Pacheco's question. No, it wasn't the water department that instigated it. It was either, we needed to address Main Street reconstruction.
Okay.
The road was actually about 40 years since the last overlayment. So in actuality, the road is in good shape for the age, when you think about it. We could not consider reconstructing that road with the frequency of water breaks. So I encouraged them to consider a water main replacement. It took quite a few years, I think nine years, for them to consider and actually score some grants that helped them do that. You know, along with, even though we, the town as a whole had to help out, you know, the users of that water district. So it wasn't them that instigated the problem. It was our department. And we really couldn't consider reconstruction without that water main replacement.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's a good learning experience for the town, though, to have these questions answered, if possible, prior to opening up the road. Do you think we could have, in hindsight, already have had these estimates and already have prepared, knowing the water department, you know, we knew we had this, we knew the road was failing. And we knew when the water department started with the water main, we were going to basically have to start our part of it. Do you think, it's, you know, we're kind of in shock factor right now with the larger number, but do you think we could have had this prior to we even opened up the road, maybe?
We had all intentions of going right behind them and doing the hot patching instead of having them do the hot patching.
Right.
It was all the intention.
No, I'm not being critical of you. I'm actually kind of, for the board to discuss and for you, I guess, I kind of want to learn from this. So we knew Main Street had issues. And you had, like you just said, you wanted to go behind the water department. But this has turned into a very large project over at least a year, maybe a couple? How long has this been?
Oh, as a town, we haven't started yet.
The town hasn't started, but Main Street's been at least a year, probably two at this point.
Yes.
Two years. So my question is, is it possible that we could have had this plan in place earlier? I guess is my question.
Yes, in hindsight, there's a few things we could have done differently, yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not being critical.
You're talking about, like, having these estimates before we started the process?
Yes, because we have to repair Main Street. But I just, for next time, for the next street that we do, I wish, I just hope that, as a town, we can, before we open any road or agree with the water department or anyone else, like, we need these numbers in the plan before we agree to opening anything up. You know, I guess that's my statement. And then my other concern is, can we get a timeline for residents so like, they could go on the Dyson website or come into Town Hall? Because we heard it's going to be a phased project that they, that we can at least, the town can be accountable to. You know, we estimate that certain, we're going to hit certain milestones on certain dates. So at least the residents can be informed on what's going on and even us, you know, just so it doesn't go on for five years, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
You know, not to jump back in, but like, I think that's really why the work that has to happen over the summer with this, you know, because, yes, I agree wholeheartedly with that need, but how, but the sequencing and the chronological nature of that need also needs to line up with a funding plan that we only have basically patently in place at this point. So I think that's why a broader discussion about, Alec, in a, oh, yeah, Alec, and that discussion happening fairly soon about how do we, how do we leverage existing funding that we have? And then, and how do we align that with the project construction schedules and communicate that information? And then at the same time, we have to, we do have, we've been building up the funds, but we still have a gap. What is the best way to address that gap? Alec, in both the short and the long term? And how does that align with the rest of the project construction schedule as well? Alec, and I think, you know, like, I think there's still a little bit to do there because if we borrow that, oh, yeah, like, we will, that does give us, if we do go that down, an option, number one, we have the ability to pay that debt service, which we have to make sure we have the ability to pay for. But also, that does allow us to better plan and structure the cash flow according to the construction. But, yeah, like, I mean, but we couldn't actually begin that conversation until we have the information that we have tonight as, you know, like, is, yeah, like, is, Alec, is really the beginning base point where we have the whole, where we have confirmation of the whole total project construction cost. But at the same time, we also have the rest of the information that we need to obligate the rest of the ARPA funding.
Could, Holly and Tom, could you guys give, just for the public and for us, just an overview, a better overview of what the largest cost drivers are? Is it labor? I heard materials, but specifically what materials? It's a large number, so just to help with digestion, I'd like to hear a little bit more and break the numbers down, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so it's asphalt and the sidewalk is what it is.
It's the asphalt, yeah. It's the asphalt and the sidewalk. Those are the highest numbers. And again, as Tom touched on with just escalation and, or inflation, I guess, prices have escalated pretty heavily. So it really is the asphalt and the sidewalks that are the largest cost. Labor is also a part of it. But again, those are kind of the main, the large costs.
Thank you, appreciate that. I agree with your statements on bonding. It seems like it's one of the only, it's really...
Options to get a deadline.
The only option, yeah.
Okay.
My last comment is, I think for this issue, and it's such a big issue, and I think our residents do need some closure. I think at some point, we should have a, I know, I recommend special meetings a lot, but I think we need a meeting specifically dedicated to Main Street and kind of hashing out a timeline and how we're going to fund it. You know, we need our subject matter experts on finances and a highway, right? Just so we can get the public some answers and get this project to a close.
I would think that'd be like late August when we have data timelines. Right now, you'd just be speculating. Some of it is availability on products too. They're going to be, and they still some delays on deliveries.
Okay, that's a start, at least knowing we're going to, you know, August, yeah.
As Mike alluded to, we got time in the summer months, unfortunately, the best time to do the work.
Okay. What, if everything went right and knowing our financials? We don't want to go five years. Do you have any idea how long something like this is going to take? Best case scenario?
Well, I, like, all the drainage to settle for a freeze and thaw before you put a permanent pavement on top of that. Drainage has to be done before the sidewalk because some of the drainage goes under the sidewalk also.
Okay.
Waiting for that winter freeze and thaw and the sidewalk on the following year, then the final pavement later in that year.
So one year?
No, a little more than a year.
A little bit more than a year, okay.
If everything's in place, no hurricanes, yes.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This is just an information only. So we're going to move on to the ARPA requests for review, discuss, and act. Yes, sir. You're going to have to come through the, uh, credits.
David, thank you. My question is, and I know it happened to a great extent in Twon. It's ongoing, that grants were used for sidewalk, new sidewalks, especially the wear section of Twon. It was also grants were used for some sidewalk remediation in North Dyte through some of the efforts of Mr. Gale and Mr. Ferry. In regards to some Main Street, I wonder, has any efforts been made to bring in grant to do sidewalk remediation? Because you have nearly two miles of sidewalks going in, or a good mile and a half on the northern side of Main, that if anyone has reached out and tried to bring in grant money to help with this project? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you wait till public input?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're going to do review, discuss, and act the Main Street Stormwater Upgrade Project for the ARPA request.
Yes, I can, Alec, in taking all that information, I can segue into actually for the, for the $436,000, for the $436,000 stormwater component of that, we do, we do have, Alec, an existing and available, Alec, an unobligated funds, $313,000 available through the Bristol County ARPA program. And so we, when we came before the board in February, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the board at that time to approve our plan to obligate the remaining approximately $700,000 in unobligated ARPA funding. We did have this project at that time. We did have this project at the time listed as a $250,000 project. Since then, we had had another project, a fire department project, coming $30,000 underbid. So that freed up $30,000 there. And then, as we know, the, what we were hoping to have funded from ARPA was the DPD video surveillance system. That wasn't able to be funded through ARPA. So what we do have, we do have an unobligated balance through ARPA of just over, actually, $314,400. So we do, of that $436,000, we do have the ability to obligate $314,400 to our, to our mini ARPA funds, which, like, in large part, we plan to do anyways. And I'm just, and, yeah, like, we've already, we already have the board's approval on $250,000 of that $314,400. And I'm wondering if the board would be able to consider approval on that whole rest of our unobligated ARPA share to, for the board to approve obligating that $314,400 towards that.
Okay. Nicole, do you have any concerns about it?
No.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor then?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
$314,400. $314,400? Okay.
No, I said $313,400. So I'll amend my motion to be $314,400.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Alec, if I could just actually, Alec, continue on because of what, just following up from the projects that the board did approve in February, Alec, I did include in the pack and updated spreadsheet on what has been, Alec, applied for and approved since that meeting in February. Alec, it also identifies our initial application for the DPD room and lock-up video system. We have to cancel that application. But I am, just because of the strict auditing requirements for these projects, if the board, at this point, based on the projects that have been, are applied for and approved, and also the project that the board just approved, Alec, if the board, Alec, would actually consider reapproving the already applied-for projects with the, actually, the current awarded allocations that actually, Alec, and those will take into account especially the $30,000 savings that we realized from the, Alec, the Dyson Fire Department equipment. Originally, that application was $371,000. What was actually, what we actually were able to apply for was that same project in the amount of $340,000 roughly. But when we go to get audited, Alec, in a year or a year and a half or so, there will be a variance unless the board actually votes to reapprove the updated numbers between what the board had initially approved. And then based on the savings and/or, and/or the ARPA applications that we had to cancel, we just want to, we just want to make sure we're reconciling all the amounts as we go, if that makes sense. So, Alec, if the board, Alec, would entertain the, Alec, approving the updated amounts of the ARPA that would be the MS4 permit compliance services, Alec, in the amount of $45,000, which was the original request. The Dyson power plant pump station upgrades in the amount of $409,000, that was the original request. The Dyson fire department self-contained breathing apparatus and protective equipment, that in the amount of $340,485, that was about $30,000 less than what we anticipated, that we realized those savings through procurement. The, Alec, we've already completed the Dyson Emergency Response Communications Project in the amount of $273,719.76. And then the Main Street Stormwater Drainage Improvements in the amount of $314,400.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, then we need a motion on the floor. This is for E., Review, Discuss, and Act, the project funding approvals.
A motion to accept the updated ARPA fund allocations as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just really, on that, just two more quick things. Like, Alec, I did include, I did include for the board's information updates from the Bristol County Commission, is just updates on the, Alec, on the obligation requirements Uh, from the Bristol, uh, Bristol County Commission, is just updates on the, uh, like, on, on the obligation requirements that have been extended... From the end of this month to us, September, uh, we are well on our path already, so we don't, uh, actually, uh, right now... In terms of, uh, overall, Bristol County Opera application, uh, was over one point three million dollars. Um, with the application for the three fourteen, uh, we have three dollars and eighty-four cents that is unobligated right now. And I just, um, it's, um, oh, yeah, this whole Opera program, uh, there are, uh, there are other cities and towns that are subbing a lot of it out. Um, we have tried to do, like, and manage, uh, like, uh, as much, um, of the procurement, of the financial management, uh, and everything else that we can. Um, and, you know, that also speaks, uh, you know, the success of that, we, uh, we just went, as, uh, we mentioned a few months ago... Uh, we just went through a single audit, uh, based on how we spent, um, our original allotment, um, I like of Opera funding, like, and... We actually came back, uh, with a squeaky-clean audit, um, squeaky-clean audit, and, uh, squeaky-clean audit with no findings at all. And, uh, yeah, so this, um, so we have been very, uh, like, suc- successful at managing, um, this project and these funds... Um, these projects the whole time, and, um, and, yeah, like, there, like, other towns that, like, are still in the process of obligating, we, uh, like, uh... Are basically all obligated, basically all obligated now, um, I do expect we will have to follow up, um, because there's always follow-up for the county. Uh, just because they're having their auditors, uh, you know, review all the applications as we go as well. But to be in this point now, you know, well in advance of the, well in advance of the county deadlines, is great. Uh, but, but to that point, uh, there will be work that does have to continue with regards to Opera, um, both in terms of Bristol County... Um, and also in, also in terms of managing, also in terms of managing, uh, uh, like, our Opera NEU reporting... Opera NEU reporting requirements that directly with the feds. Um, I have been, I have been the board's, I have been the board's designee up to this point. Um, Ian, but, yeah, we will also need a vote at this point, um, uh, to actually, for the board... For the board to rescind me, um, serving as a designee on this, um, as a town administrator, and for the board, um, to appoint the interim town administrator, Mr. Purcell... To, to serve as a designee, uh, and to apply for and to follow up on these matters in the future.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, like, before, like, I, uh, like, before I forget, like, you know, stop talking in a minute, but, like, I really, really, really wanna thank, like, Serena and Ralph for everything on this. We've, uh, like, it's been like a team, it's been a team, a tag-team leave, uh, labor of love on all of this. And, like, our partnership to manage all these projects through, um, I, I, like, I couldn't have done it without her, so, thank you, Serena.
Real labor of love?
I don't know, that's what I call things, I don't know, I'm lucky.
Okay, so we need a motion on the floor to rescind Michael as the, uh, designee to authorize the Opera, uh, to, uh, Jim Purcell. Purcell.
Can I just comment first, if you don't mind?
No.
No? I know, I talk a lot. I just wanted to say thank you to Serena and Michael as well, just hearing how, you know, so many different communities subbed it out, and you guys took on the work in-house. And we allocated almost every possible dollar, that's amazing, so, thank you for your hard work and we're lucky for having you guys there. Um, but that said, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sure.
Up, update the Opera Authorization Designee to strike, uh, Michael Mullin to add Jim Purcell.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, review, discuss, and act, uh, special town meeting for Thursday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, you've heard comments earlier this evening, Michael?
Yes.
I'll say, I can speak to this.
Sure.
Yes. Okay, so, I'm Serena, the town accountant, in case anybody doesn't know. Um, and I did request to have a special town meeting before June thirtieth, before the end of the fiscal year. Um, Tuesday morning, after the annual town meeting, I started going through all of the motions and putting, you know, together my information to close out the books with, um... With GOR, and the special town meeting is only going to address Article Five, which was the budget article. To balance our budget, we, um, the Board of Selectmen, had requested to use available funds or free cash to bring us to a balanced budget. And reviewing all of the motions, um, you know, almost ten of them within that one article, I realized none of the motions referenced... Using available funds or free cash. They only mentioned raise and appropriate and transfer from other, um, other areas, such as, you know... The sewer indirect, which is staying the same, the ambulance is staying the same, what we bring from Title Five and PEG access is staying the same. So, the original motion, which is Article One, we have to rescind what was voted at the meeting on Monday. Um, because that original motion read to raise and appropriate one point eight million, and then to transfer from sewer indirect twenty thousand, two seventy-four. So, as I said, the sewer portion is staying the same. So, now Article Two is only addressing, because I don't need to address the entire article, the entire budget, the twenty-eight million, I only need to address one section of them. So, the general government section, which is that first section, um, is where we just need to change the language to say that... We're gonna raise and appropriate only one point three hundred and thirty-two and change million, keep the same amount from sewer direct. And this is where we're gonna use the available funds that were voted to use, which equal four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen. So, we're only changing where the money is coming from.
Mm-hmm.
When we had it all as raise and appropriate and transfer from those other funds that are staying the same, that put us over our levy limit. So, legally, we can't have it that way, and financially, do you, like, we just legally can't be over our levy limit period.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I did request for this to be changed right away. Um, we can only use available funds through June thirtieth, which is why, um, you know, this is the twenty-seventh, and our bylaw requests a two-week notice. Which is why, um, you know, we're having it in front of the Selectmen today, um, and then it can go out Thursday and meet the two-week deadline. Which also has to meet the June thirtieth deadline, which is a Sunday, so that kinda jams us up, being on the Sunday as well.
Uh, can you address the cost of this town meeting by any chance?
Um, I...
Wouldn't know, okay.
Um, I'm sure it's gonna be, you know, limited election staff, maybe, you know, if she feels that she needs a police detail, but it, it, I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near... What was needed for annual town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, like, I believe, oh, sorry, like, not to jump in.
Unless Shara feels that she needs that personnel.
Yeah, and she's already been talking with her, her existing office staff to evaluate, just being able to use them to staff the special town meeting. Um, Ian, like, I do know, we, uh, like, if we do have, have any unanticipated costs, uh, with regards to police details, we do... In the current FY twenty-five budget, like, we do have room, I believe, to, to be able to do that.
And we also have until July fifteenth to move, um, any current, like, fiscal year twenty-four money around, like, if, if we do end up that... Realizing that it will put us in a deficit somewhere, we do have until July fifteenth to do end-of-year transfers or finance committee transfers to cover this current year's budget for that.
Yeah, but those, uh, costs, uh, should be extremely minimal.
I think so.
Do, do we know why this happened?
Um, I'm not sure why, I think it's something that, you know, all of us missed, um, you know, us administration, the finance committee... You know, we all knew what we were using the money to balance the budget, and...
Yeah, like, it was even, like, in the article, the same language that we were relying on, uh, was in the article itself, it just wasn't replicated in the motion.
In the actual motion.
Yeah.
And that's what, and, you know, the state goes by, is what's actually read in the motion. So, it was there in the initial description of the article, and then with all of those ten motions, which I'm hoping we can kind of fix that process next year...
Mm-hmm.
Um, it got missed.
Okay. Um, before we vote, uh, Mr. Moore, you had a couple of questions, were they answered for you this evening? Osley, yes? What wasn't answered?
Speaking as my turn, when I was moderator, uh, all of the motions were sent to me ahead of time, and they were all pre-prepared. Exactly who is gonna be reading the motions, exactly what the motion was gonna be, this is all, this is not a mistake that should be made on town meeting floor. This is something that should all be prepared ahead of time, and I simply don't understand who could have made such a big mistake. And, and I recall hearing lots of mentions of free cash, maybe it's, we're talking about a different section, but I do recall several, several motions being made... Saying this is coming from free cash, so, I'm still a little confused as to how it happened.
Uh, I guess so am I, it, it seems like it was a collective error, um, n- nobody caught it.
The buck stops with the Board of Selectmen, we're the collective leaders, and we review the warrants and we review the motions, so, um... If you wanna know who's to blame, I think the buck stops with us.
With Mark.
Yeah, like, I mean, like...
That's fine.
So, I get it, it's all Mark's fault.
Yeah, but, like, just to be clear, like, I don't, I mean, I don't really wanna get into, uh, any type of blame game, this is a very technical clerical ever... Where, you know, like, we, yeah, like, I mean, like, in talking with the DOI yesterday, because we reached right out to them, uh, they... Even had mentioned that they had seen this problem before, um, it happens, it's not ideal.
No.
Um, it's, it's very much not ideal, uh, which we weren't here right now talking about this, but, you know, like, I mean, oh, yeah, like, I mean, uh... At this point, to come up with any blame game, I think is...
Not looking for blame.
Yeah, like, it's just, uh, like, we have a path forward, um, uh, yeah, like, a path forward of the dollar amount. Oh, you know, like, the bottom-line dollar amount is not changing in terms of what has to appear.
Right.
Ian, you know, like, we just move forward at this point.
It's more of a formality.
So, so I'd like to say that, I'm not asking for blame, I'm not asking for a scapegoat, I'm asking for, I don't understand how this happened, and it should never happen again.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying, is to prevent such things happening again in the future. I know that Mr. Mullin and I had talked about the budgetary motions and combining them, and trying to make it simpler, simpler.
Yeah, like, and I think also, oh, yeah, we have a process in practice of trying to als- trying to also respect, you know, tradition and practices as well. Um, we do, just in terms of my experience and other towns that I've worked in seven, we do have an extremely clunky motion process. Uh, but, in my opinion, we've always balanced the practice and processes we've always had, you know, with how we've changed. Uh, and I think, and I don't wanna speak for the town accountant, um, but, this is, you know, in terms of addressing this... Uh, yeah, like, I think we know exactly where we need to go, you know, to address this motion issue in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so this is a review, discuss, and act, we gotta set the special town meeting for Thursday, June twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-four. And then, we're going to open the article, uh, for the special town meeting, um, and then close the town meeting, article warrant, I mean, not article... Close the warrant, and then, um, approve the, uh, the town meeting warrant. So, we need a motion on the floor to, um, open the town, uh, meeting warrant. Actu- I'm sorry, we, uh, a motion to set the town meeting for Thursday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
This, has the, um, moderator been?
Yes, he is. Yes, um, moderator has been reached out to, town council's been reached out to, the town clerk's been reached out to as well. Um, and the chairman of the finance committee has as well.
Do we know where it's going to be yet?
Um, like, in the auditorium, uh, Dayton, Rehoboth Regional High School.
Okay.
That's been booked as well.
Does it work for you guys, the date?
Uh, for me, it's fine, I don't...
Gonna make it work, yeah.
Okay, I have a family commitment that I already made.
Okay.
I'll try to make it, but, uh, is the board okay if...
Absolutely, um, ta- take care of your family first.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to set the special town meeting for Thursday, June twenty-seventh. At seven P.M.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, now we have to open the town meeting warrant.
Motion to open the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And we do have at this point proposed Articles One and Two.
I'd like to make a motion to include Articles One and Two as presented in the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and now we have to close the town meeting warrant.
Motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, approve the special town meeting warrant.
Make a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, review, discuss, and act, Board of Selectmen calendar from July through December of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, nothing's changed, it's, uh, still the same as far as, uh, when the meetings are, so is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept the Board of Selectmen meeting schedule as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board of Selectmen Signature Authorization, this is a review, discuss, and act as well.
Yeah, like, just, uh, like, just, I am act, like, I, as a town administrator, like, I'm listed as a backup, uh, signatory. Uh, like, in this, um, in this agenda item, would give the board, um, the ability to add Mr. Purcell, um, as, as a backup signatory as well.
Okay.
If you'd be comfortable with that.
All set? Okay, um, so is there a motion on the floor, please?
Motion to update the twenty twenty-five, what do we call it, signature authorization form... To strike Michael Mullin and to add James Purcell, and Peter Karen will remain the primary signer.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, review, discuss, and act, the facilities request for the library.
Yeah, like, this is all pretty straight, uh, forward, Mr. Chairman, the library as one of our departments, um, they're requesting to hold a movie under the stars.
Do we need a signature from building for that?
We never have, uh, like, the library has had events there in the past, um, but, to you, to your point, Mr. Bucico... The, um, the only question that I have on this is how they're actually creating the structure to show the movie.
They blow some, they blow the thing up.
Okay, yeah, like, I mean, if they're using that, like, um, uh, based on that question, I would recommend that the board contingent, approve... Approve a contingent on the approval of the building commissioner.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Sure. Okay, so we need that motion, please.
Motion to approve movie under the stars, um, request from the library, uh, contingent on the building commissioners, okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, this is E. now, review, discuss, and act, DPW supply awards.
Yeah, like, uh, like, in the next, uh, like, the next, um, excuse me, the next two agenda items, uh, like, are the searchage pro... Um, uh, like, are the, like, searchage procured rates, uh, like, we're a member of the Southeastern Regional, um, uh, purchasing group. Uh, where we procure, um, have most of our office supplies and also DPW supplies, um, through this group, which the, um, highway superintendent is a member. Um, on the highway side and the town administrator is a member on the office supply, and, uh, yeah, um, and the other, uh, like, and any other procured entities that we... Uh, that we work, um, that we have to procure, have an obligation to procure, um, so these updated, these updated contracts, uh... Um, come to us at this point every year.
Okay.
So, I'd recommend, um, uh, um, to approve the awards that's proposed.
Okay, is, uh, motion on the floor?
Motion to approve a DPW supply award and paper contract as presented.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, we've done G, so now to H. Annabelle Powell, this is, again, a review, discuss, and act, Director of Council on Aging Employment Contract.
Yay.
Yes, well, we do have Ms. Powell here with us, um, and, uh, but her, um, her current employment contract, um... Um, is expiring at the end of this month, at the end of the fiscal year, um, as we know, Ms. Powell has, you know, a team doing an incredible job, um, everything, and they've... And they built, uh, Council on Aging Program into a program that just really shines, so, um, this, um, what's before the board... Is a proposed, um, three-year, um, three-year contractual, um, three-year contractual for Bella. Um, it has, um, it has the same boilerplate provisions that we do, uh, uh, with all of our non-union employees as well. Uh, is there anything you want to add, Ms. Powell?
I would, uh, like to thank you, thank the board...
I would like to thank you, thank the board in advance for giving me the chance to serve the elders in Dayton for another three years. It has been some hard work with the help of Michael. I was blessed to have him on my side and my board who helped, who helped me to get this far. And of course, the team that we have in place, I'm blessed that that has worked this way.
Sure. The thank you comes from us because you do a tremendous job, you and your staff.
Thank you.
We do this with great pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Nicole, do you have any?
No, I, the same as what.
I echo what our chairman said and it's been so, it's been awesome to watch you, you know, you had, you grew with your team and you, you have a wonderful team there. And you've brought in so many grants and transformed your facility over there and your patio and your building looks beautiful. And other than asking how do you do it, my question is over the next three years, what, do you have one thing in particular that, what? You already done so much, you have anything else?
There's a lot more coming. Yes, there is. But one of the things that I would really like to work on is resting a little bit because I have been on the go for a few years now. And it did take a toll on me, but I've recovered. And now that we are in place and everybody knows their duties, you know, their job, their responsibilities, I would like to be able to take my vacations and spend some time with my mom and my husband in my backyard, which is what I work for.
Sounds great.
Which is really what I work for, my backyard.
Thank you. So we need a motion on the floor, please.
Motion to approve the contract for Annabella Powell, Director of Council on Aging.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Review, discuss and act, the ratification of proposed employment contract amendments. This is for Karen Brady and Leon, Leanne Kirwin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, these are the contract amendments. For both Ms. Brady, like Ms., like Ms., like Kirwin, there are two provisions in their existing contracts that don't, that don't necessarily match the benefits that we have traditionally offered to other employees, specifically with regards to vacation and also with regards to retirement, the retirement paid out of unused accrued sick time. So all these two amendments do is bring those provisions and incorporate them through these amendments into, into Ms. Brady, into Ms. Brady and Ms. Kirwin's existing employment contracts.
Okay. Again, this is a review, discuss and act, so is there a motion on the floor, please?
Motion to approve the employment contracts as presented for Karen Brady and Leanne Kirwin.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. J, a vacation rollover request. This happens every year at this time.
Yes, and.
Standard?
I, yes, like, just actually starting with the, just with, with the fire chief fee in, in his contract, he needs to request a carryover of vacation time. He's proposing to carry over two weeks from F Y 24 to F Y 25. And I can, we can take these one by one of that.
Sure. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor for Christopher McGee?
Motion to approve Christopher McGee's request to roll over 80 hours of vacation time.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. George Nichols, Nichols?
Yes, like in this, so both chiefs have the ability to almost are, are, are to roll over as well. And, but the, but the chief of police is asking, just based on the year we've had, in addition to the, his, his, the more typical, a two-week rollover, he's asking the board for the ability to roll over an additional five days. Yeah, with the agreement that he would use those additional five days by the end of August. So he wouldn't, he wouldn't continue those. He actually, he actually wouldn't can, yeah, like they wouldn't be available until after August, the end of August of 2024.
I have no concerns with that. Okay. So is there a motion on the floor for George Nichols?
Motion to allow George to carry over two weeks per his contract and an additional one week to be used by the end of August.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Police union related 111 F request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, we do, I like as a board and I believe the public knows, we have, have had two officers on 111 F leave. One of them for our team most about two, three quarters of the fiscal year now. And then we had like another officer who was out on leave for a good part of the winter and early three months. The, like, I do believe the, the police uni, the, the police, the police unions request is valid and has a lot of merit. But I just, to be honest with you, we haven't had time to dive in just yet to the, just, I just relate to the cost implications of the potential of actually buying out additional vacation time. Like in regards to just available budget funding. And I had hoped to actually, all in the months, everything else that's been happening, I hope to be able to take a closer look at that. But I would recommend on this point, just that we have an additional two weeks for the interim town administrator, the town accountant, just, just to be able to look at this request in regards to existing budgetary funds.
Okay.
Just so we know, I kind of better of, better informed in terms of the lay of the land.
So you want to table this one until the 27th?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Not the 27th, whenever, is it the 27th, the next meeting? 25th?
26.
26.
I'm sorry, like I hope, I'd hope to have some, I'd hope to be able to do a deep dive, but like I just wasn't able to get there.
That's okay. So is there a motion on the floor to table, please?
Motion to table for two weeks.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed year-end transfers.
Okay, so we have a number of department year-end transfers. These were already approved by the finance committee. I just had them do it the night of town meeting, Monday night before the meeting. Slightly out of order, but I just figured time-wise, I want to get these in now with everybody's department budgets so they can appropriately allocate the funds that they have the remaining of the year and see exactly where everybody is standing, especially with the clerical union. Quite a few departments are having a little trouble balancing and trying to figure out exactly what funds they're receiving for that transfer. So I believe the first one on the list is the fiber grant.
Yep.
Okay. So the town received a fiber grant for 201,000. And at the end of fiscal year 22, so June of 22, the town went to the finance reserve committee to ask for the town match portion, which was 10,585,000. And then somewhere within closing that books with the transition of the accountants at that time, that money did not roll over as an accumbance into fiscal year 23. So essentially that money that was already previously approved by the finance committee reserves closed out to free cash. So now that we're done with the grant and we're, we'll be closing out the grant tomorrow, hopefully with this transfer approved because we do need it for the grant closing. So this year, as it came around, I just requested the money to come out of our group health insurance line, Department 914, and to, for the 10,585 for the fiber grant. Are we going to vote these one by one or do?
Probably just collect, take them collectively unless there's a concern.
No concerns.
You don't even have to go through them one by one. I, I guess the only two questions I have, can you explain the Forest Hills Estates 53G account in the highway department street sweeping salary transfer?
Sure. Okay, so the planning board 53G account. So there's multiple projects in town that, like D I Trust and Forest Hills are essentially the same project. And they, you know, will come in and start with the conservation commission and have their money with conservation and then move over to the planning department and then they have their own money with the planning department. So the first problem that occurred back in fiscal year 22 was that invoices that should have been paid out of planning were actually paid, paid out of conservation, that's what it was. So the bills should have gone through planning and it, the bills came through the conservation fund, which it had money. So the bills got processed and there was no red flag. And then when I was closing the books for fiscal year 23, I noticed that the, one of the funds were negative. So I went down there and discussed it with Carrie and Lisa. And it was determined that there was a $10,000 deposit that went into planning that it should have gone into conservation. So I let the close, the books close the way that they were in 23 and then in 24, I put that 10,000 into the appropriate fund.
Okay.
So doing that caused planning to be negative $5,524. And we've reached out to, I'm not sure if I'm using the right words, the developer or the attorney, whoever is on that project. And they're, so far are not paying. So the planning general budget has enough money to cover this fund. So when I close the books, it will not hit free cash and it will also, this cost will not also be pushed over to raise and appropriate to the residents. That's, you know, this was a balancing error that neither department caught.
Right.
And I don't feel that it's necessary to let it close out in the negative and then be pushed onto the residents. They have the money to cover it in the future. If we are able to collect through court litigations or whatnot, then I'll just move the money back and it'll just go back to free cash, essentially. You know, everything just gets pulled back into free cash.
Okay. Thank you. And just the salary transfer?
Okay, so the salary transfer. When we do the budget for stormwater in the highway department, Tom Ferry runs both of those budgets. So when we're setting the appropriations, we take a portion and allocate it to stormwater. Like, you know, he has his, say his whole salary is 100,000.
Yep.
But he knows that him and his guys and his office worker are going to do stormwater projects.
Right.
So they take a percentage of the salary and put it into stormwater. And then as the year goes on, they realized they're actually doing more work on the highway side and not so much on the stormwater. So he's just alloc, asking to allocate the money out of the stormwater budget into his 422 highway budget.
Okay. Mark or Nicole, do you have any questions about the year-end transfers?
No, thank you.
Okay, perfect. And then I'm going to have the originals to Karen, if you guys don't mind signing.
Signing it, yeah.
At the end, yeah.
So we need a review, discuss and act, the year-end transfers as printed in the agenda.
Motion to approve the year-end transfers one through nine as presented in the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have acknowledgements. The highway department acknowledgement of donated sick time.
Yeah, like you know, we, if you can just be with me for one moment. We do, the highway department and Superintendent Ferry, he does have an employee who a few weeks ago was involved in a very, in a very serious motor vehicle, motor vehicle accident. As an employee, to our knowledge at this point, he's home, he's doing well, but he will be out of work for some time. His employee is a great employee, but he doesn't have a lot of accumulated sick time, just based on the length of time he's been working for the town. So we do, as we know, we have an amazing group of town employees who, who get the variety of our town employees. Like in the highway department, like and, like and, in the, in the council on aging, who, who have, through their own volition, they have taken the step to donate portions of their sick time to, to this employee.
Great.
And we just wanted to acknowledge that and to thank those employees for what they're doing to help another fellow town employee in his family stay afloat and just for the consideration of that, so.
Karen, can we send them a letter? If you don't mind, just thanking them for, on behalf of the town, not just the selectmen, for doing this. It's a, it's a great thing. And Michael, I understand you have donated your time as well.
Yeah, like I've obviously not going to, oh, yeah, like no one ever wants to draw on their sick time.
Right.
But, and I, but I have, I have accumulated sick time. And I, like I have decided to donate all, like all of the accumulated sick time that I've built up in the more than three years that I've been here to this gentleman as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
A letter from Trista Tate for the Council on Aging.
Yeah, yes, we.
For the donation of $400?
Yes. Yeah, the patio project is just a, it's, I mean, as we talked about earlier, it's, I like, I mean, like, I began as a really, like a grant initiative that it was a, I can't say labor of love anymore, but it was a great team effort. And, and, you know, and now it's really turned into an amazing community effort as well, where the benefits are going to be realized for a long, long time, so.
Great. Thank you. And a letter from Christopher McGee, the fire chief regarding two new personnel, city personnel, the call personnel. This is not an appointment, this is just, I mean, so it's not appointed by the selectmen?
Yes, right. Yes, there is, he has, he has appointed two new members of the call personnel ranks, Colby Fornia and Jacob Clark.
Welcome.
And we received a letter this evening from Paul Pacheco, the current chairman of the Board of Health. Due to circumstances, he is resigning from, personal circumstances beyond his control, he is resigning from the Board of Health effective the 14th of 2024.
Do you want a motion to accept that?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Paul Pacheco with thank you and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the approval of the warrants, please.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to pay the warrants through May 30th, 2024, 49A dash 24, 144,135.79 and 49B dash 24 for 213,119.76.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for warrants paid through June 6th, 2024, 50A dash 24 in the amount of 122,924.50 and warrant 50B dash 24 in the amount of 396,648.76.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to pay the warrants through June 13th, 2024, 51A dash 24 in the amount of 121,599.52 and warrant 51B dash 24 in the amount of 122,543.21.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now up to public input again. Yes, Mr. Hall?
I have two words. I do this for a reason, so I.
Okay.
Since Leonard Hall, 760 Main Street, Dayton. Since my name was mentioned tonight in public input and alluded to in the selectmen's reports, I would like to address a request, Mr. Pacheco, made earlier in the meeting. I am not here to make a legal defense for what was in the flyer. However, I am here to apologize for any distress caused to you by the flyer. Please believe me when I say there was no malice intended. I assume certain things and there was some misinformation communicated. I assume certain things, and there was some misinformation communicated to me by others involved in preparing this flyer and in the final product. Again, I apologize and promise that going forward, I will work closer with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second matter is something that is near and dear to all our hearts, and I know it was mentioned at town meeting, but I would like to close, since it is Mike Mullin's last Board of Selectmen meeting. As we close, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Michael Mullin for all that he did for the town of Dyton, and to wish him best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Goulat, 631 Gray Terrace. I got to tell you, I sat there at town meeting, I had difficulty following what was going on, and I've been to every town meeting since who knows when. This is not a criticism of anyone, and I think it's something we should consider for the fall town meeting. The last town meeting that I found very easy to follow was the last one that Mr. McKeon did, but that's because I had been on the Finance Committee. But he also put in place a method, and we would go through the articles. I'm talking about the main budget with all those departments and that. And the procedure that we followed was, he would list a block of departments, and then there's a total. And he'd say, does anyone have questions on any of these? And if there were no questions, he would just have the motion to approve, if you will, in fact, the total. So that took care of a whole bunch. If somebody says, I want to talk about this article, meaning this department, then they would focus on that, it would be discussed, and once the discussion was over, we would then again vote a block. That's how we got through the main budget. But I can tell you, sitting front row center, at times, I'm looking at this, saying to myself, what are they voting on? I could not follow it. So anyhow, I think possibly how, obviously, the fall town meeting won't have the budget on it, but that's an annual town meeting procedure to consider, doing these in blocks. Similar to what the Finance Committee does when it does its final meeting, it does it that way. And when Mr. McKeon kind of incorporated this, this was something the Finance Committee had done, when they have their final meeting, and it's, you've discussed everything, but you've got to go back and vote everything. So you do it in blocks, and it saves a lot of time, and you can focus on, if somebody says, I want to talk about department, pick a number, that's what you talk about, and then everything else flows. The other thing I want to mention is that, I was asked why I read that article, that was the way it was written in the warrant about the pilot agreement, because the motion that I was given was about this big. And when I looked at it, I remembered what I was told by Attorney Gay many years ago when we started pilot agreements. So I read from the warrant, and yes, that was quite a bit of stuff to read, but we were talking about two locations in one pilot agreement. Obviously, if the other one that had gotten tabled had been read, you could see it was shorter, but it's because it was not focused on two pieces of land and, you know, the whole bit. The reason I read that in its entirety is because what Attorney Gay had told me years ago, when we put the boilerplate together and his office approved the boilerplate pilot agreement, and we were going to the first town meeting with a pilot agreement, he said to me, make sure there is enough information in the motion you make to hopefully give everybody the information they need to make a determination. The last thing you want to do is have voters want to take apart a pilot agreement and discuss the full agreement at town meeting. Obviously, we don't put the full pilot agreement in the warrant, it's over 15 pages, and it's got diagrams and charts. So anyhow, that's why that was written that way, and when the next pilot agreement comes up, it'll have the same information, the location, the megawatts, the whatever. We didn't put the money in the article because you've got to allow the people to be able to ask questions. We knew the question would be how much money, and I was prepared for that, and whether or not there had been increases budgeted in the 20-year payment plan, which there were. So by reading all of that, it answered a lot of questions, and you could sit there and follow exactly what I was saying, so that, that's the reason that article was so long, and not just say, I make a motion that the town approved the pilot agreement for as printed in the warrant, because if people don't read the warrant, and then they start asking questions, it's like, and I'm going to refer back to the warrant, it's, you know. But anyhow, I just wanted people to understand why I did that whole thing. But again, I learned pilot agreements from David Gay, so, and he wasn't there when I actually read it, but I know what he told me to do, so that's why that was done. And I have one last thing to do, Mr. Mullin.
Oh, no. I'm afraid.
You want to come forward here? I have a presentation.
Oh, boy.
Now, I want you to understand, I've only done this presentation one time before, and it was when Ken Pacheco announced he was not running again for the Board of Selectmen. So I'm going to present you with a supply of red pens.
No, what was that?
Because I noticed in the basket that the gift that we gave you today, there were no red pens.
I know, yeah, no.
You can't operate without red ink.
Has everything, yeah, like the basket from town, had pens, had all the essentials. Pens, Roll-Aids, oh, we see peanut butter cups.
Except.
Huh?
Except, you're nice.
A lot of the essentials, so.
But I said to Karen.
Thank you.
I said to Karen, there's no red pens in there. She says, no, we didn't get him red pens. I says, he knows me as the red ink lady, he's got to have pens. So anyhow, I'll see you tomorrow, Mike.
Nancy, I have a question for you before you go too far. I have a question, if you don't mind. So you're the pilot agreement guru, and you write our pilots for, before you were an assessor, you've been writing them for a long time.
First pilot agreement, first three that came down the pike, I was on the Finance Committee. Those were presented at a meeting, and I, when I heard them, Carol Boragad happened to be sitting near me as an assessor. I said, did you guys vote on that? She says, we've never seen them. I said, this is a problem. I had said from day one, these agreements have got to go to town meeting.
Right.
They're not legal. And then when I got elected to the Board of Selectmen, I presented the first one, and that one was okay. It was the other two that were not acceptable, the town meeting had not voted on them, they had clauses that contained real estate taxes, absolutely not, only personal property. So they were tabled, one company sued us in law, and the judge ruled in favor of the town, meaning they got to go to town meeting before they get signed by the board, and you can't include real estate taxes, which was exactly our whole position. So just to let you guys know, the one I presented, I emailed the man I deal with when I got home after town meeting, and he wrote back, and I said to him, what I need from you now is, review that boilerplate one more time, I filled in all the blanks, you know what the payment plan is, because I sent that to you separately. If you have any questions at all about that boilerplate, I need to know. Nothing's going to change. It got approved. But the next step is, when I hear back from you, we've got to make enough copies, originals, because it's going to come to you as a board, because now that the town has approved it under the interpretation of the judge, ruled in our favor, once town meeting X, it goes to the Board of Selectmen to accept it and sign it. What happened before, they got signed and they never went to town meeting. So you're not out of the process yet, but that, those will come to you. When you voted to put these on the warrant, that's all you were doing was voting to put them on the warrant. You were not approving these pilot agreements, because your role is put them on the warrant and sit back and wait. And that's another reason why I've always presented them, because, again, on advice of counsel, David Gay, the selectmen do not get involved in the approval process until the townspeople say, okay, Board of Selectmen, we approved these, now you can sign them and we'll get them executed. So this all came out of that court case, but anyhow.
So I didn't get to ask my question yet, but I appreciate that.
Okay, so I'm lying, sorry.
My question is, have you, or are you willing to maybe train Stephanie or some of the assessor staff on it? I know you'll be doing this for another 100 years.
Stephanie has been involved, and Stephanie and I have sat with our tax consultant when he does, because he does a spreadsheet with 20 years or 15 years, if that's what they want. Each year is right there, costed out.
Okay.
And so, yes, she has been involved, she says, I don't think I want to learn this. I says, you have to learn it.
Right.
It's not like you do these all the time. The boilerplate is what's important, as long as you've got our tax consultant to help you with how much money we're talking about. She understood how I take that total dollars and front-end load it, so yes, she is in the process, yes.
Awesome.
But it's difficult if you've never had to deal with it and it doesn't come up all the time, but, yeah, she's going to be doing these.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you, Nancy. Very informative. Mr. Rosel, you had your question before.
So it's dangerous to remind you that I was going to say something. Brave man that you are. So, has a trained member of the United States Army Quartermaster Corps and assigned to the 379th Combat Support Engineers, who primarily, one of their primary functions is to build roads for the United States Army to transport their whatever on. So I want to get over to your question, Mark, regarding roads and understanding them. And this town, and probably most towns in the state of Massachusetts, build roads to a spec, and I believe that spec is available for your examination. And one of the drivers on the expense of not only roads in a town, but our highways, is driven by the weight of the vehicles and the shock and vibration that they transfer down into the roadbed. So there's a starter for you. So now, the other part of this, and it came up tonight, it had to do with the asphalt. Now, the, so, on your path to becoming more informed on cost and cost drivers, so you might want to ask people who provide asphalt, what has happened, you know, seek out industry experts and people who live that life every day, you know, what has been the cost drivers? I strongly suspect that Bidenomics was a driver in a recent cost of the building of making asphalt, and therefore the building of roads. So once again, we can thank, you know, Mr. Biden for his wonderful administration and leadership. But I just wanted to encourage you, show, point out to you that there were resources that's in writing, both in the town and probably at the state level, with regard to what's required to build a town-approved road, and you have a wonderful assistant over there who could probably guide you in your studies. All right, that's it for me tonight. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Any more public input? Anybody up there? No? Okay.
Oh, wait, we got.
Oh, Dave, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was going to chicken out of this, but I can't.
No, don't.
I'm the guy behind the camera that doesn't like to do public input.
Mike Mullin, all I can say is a pleasure working with you for the last three years. We really thank you for your support. If it wasn't for you, we probably wouldn't get our studio up and running. I wish we had a little more time where you could be our first guest. As a member of the Dyton Lions Club.
The new one will get better ratings than I would have.
Well, maybe we could bring you back, you know, five years later, you come see us and see what's up. You know, you're always welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
And as a Lions Club member, we appreciate your support, too. You helped us out, like with the Pavilion Fire, is setting up the safety with different people coming and going, reserving it through the summer, and all I can say is thank you, I wish you the best. Take care, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks again. Thanks, Dave. Okay, moving, nobody else? Moving on to the minutes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of May 8, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to go to an executive session again. This is under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the chair does declare. So, folks, thank you for coming this evening, and.
I'd like to make that into a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for pointing that out.
Second.
Yep, thank you, Dave.